Mark Harmon with VIB TV. We're here today with Pastor Matthias Esuemi. He is a candidate for Vallejo City Council. And we're here on Moore Island in Eldon Park. It's a beautiful day. And we are going to ask Pastor Esuemi a few questions.
Thank you.
So Matthias, can I call you Matthias?
Yeah, that would be fine.
All right. Tell me a little bit about yourself. You originally came from Nigeria, is that correct?
Yeah, I came from Nigeria. Let me give you a story of myself.
Give me a little background.
My name is Matthias Esuemi. I came to the United States in 1976. I was in the Air Force in Nigeria. I was trained in London. I have my license as an aircraft engineer. I retired as a pensioner in the military in Nigeria Air Force. And after my retirement, I worked with another company. We produce an aircraft in Kaduna in IEP. I was in a management position there.
So what exactly did you do in management? What were you supervising?
Not really supervising, but being in management does not mean you supervise. But I mostly work on the field, on the field, on technical parts as an aircraft.
So you were doing maintenance on aircraft power plants, that kind of thing?
An airframe. That's I specialize on that. Power plant and airframe, that's what I specialize upon.
Do you still fly?
Oh, no, no, I don't do any longer for a long time.
You stay on the ground, but you fix them?
No, 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 not that way. But really, when I was in the Air Force, I'm like a flight engineer, a board engineer, which when we go out of the state, we follow the pilot to maintain the aircraft when they are flying.
I see. So you were a ground support and so on?
Ground support also, that one. I was a specialist on some of the aircraft, which and the German aircraft, United States aircraft and British aircraft. I was a specialist trained for that. And after my 18 years in the military, I left the military.
18 years in the military in Nigeria?
Nigeria Air Force. I left Nigeria Air Force and I came to the United States with my wife.
What made you decide to come to the States?
I decided to come to have traveled a lot. London, Germany, Italy. I just, I came here with a citizen, as a citizen. And I need another environment because I'm very straightforward, man. I don't like games. I love to be frank when doing things.
Well, I think we all appreciate that in a politician.
Because that's why I find it difficult to bend with a lot of people. If you play game, especially when you are in a privileged place and you think it's your responsibility to help somebody and you refuse to help, I don't like that. I got irritated. Not because everybody has a mistake. That guy might have made a mistake, but we don't use that mistake to castigate him or download him down because that does not jive in the presence of the living God. I believe when a man fall, he can rise up. That's what I believe. And I live in the United States with my wife. I have four children. I came to the United States, we settle in Oakland.
What brought you to Vallejo?
Okay, I'm coming. I will get to that. I was in Vallejo. I was supposed to buy a home in Oakland, but I was not comfortable with Oakland character of way, especially if my children can't join me in the United States. I want an environment which is more conducive, more safer and more loving. I asked, I've been searching a lot of places and I found out Vallejo was more conducive for people to live in. I moved from Oakland and I bought a house in Vallejo and I moved to Vallejo and enjoyed.
How long have you lived in Vallejo now?
I came here in 96.
So right when the military base closed, right?
Yeah. Really, I did not even take note of that because when you are new in a place, you should search in your ground. Because you cannot job because you came to a place to try to prove you know so much. You have to learn from the people you met in the city. Be humble and be have humility. Learn to learn and we came here, I enjoy Vallejo and I feel it's a better place for me. I be so active with the community in Vallejo, happy the homeless.
So you've done some work with the homeless? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Okay. I have one homeless by name Ryan. He was homeless. He just got out of jail, saw him in the street. I asked him, I talked to him, I called him. He's a white guy. I say, "Do you like the way you doing things?" He said, "No." First of all, I talked to him about the Word of God. I find it was interesting in the Word of God. I brought him closer to me and when I brought him closer, what I did was I supported him in at least two times meal every day.
This is through your church?
Not through my church.
Just personally?
Personally. But there's one thing he cannot do, he cannot stay with me. I will have given him a room. But he has a club with the parole officer when he was released from jail that there's a limit, you cannot stay with the environment of people. And I personally, I told the parole officer why, say, because of the crime he has committed. And I helped him a lot, even to secure a job for him. And talked to somebody, I told him, "Do you have your GED?" He said, "No." I said, "Okay, I'm going to pay for you to have your GED." I took him to, what was the name of the street? California Road. That is by Vallejo Adult Education to enroll. I said, "Go there." I took him there. "Do you want to do, I'm going to pay for you to enroll. I want you to have your GED and be a good person in our city." He agreed. He had been coming to church, doing things good, but later he mess up when he saw a girlfriend. And I find another guy who is his friend, a black guy, and I do the same thing for that one. But one thing I found out that accommodation hinder many of them when they have...
Right, there's a real shortage of homeless shelters.
Thank you. When they have nowhere to sleep, wake up, be able to be responsible. I said, "We have a lot of home that is empty. How can't we give some of these to these people and mentor them, monitor them so that the way they live in that place will be better?"
So if you were elected to City Council, I guess then the homeless is going to be one of your major issues.
Homeless would be one of my major issue. My major issue mostly crime. Because a lot of leads to crime. When we talk of crime, a lot, people don't go to school because they have criminal background. A lot of people are homeless because they are criminals. A lot of people have bad head because they are criminals. Why? They are under drug addict. And when you're on drug, I don't, I don't believe how can you as an individual or group of people think how you to better is our life? It's very difficult.
Kind of the things you've mentioned bring up a couple of questions at least. You know, one that comes to mind is when you talk about the issues of crime in Vallejo. And interestingly, tomorrow at the City Council meeting, Chief Nicolini is, the police chief is going to be doing a presentation. And one of the interesting points of the presentation is that quite frankly, crime is maybe not as high as people think it is. It's actually, the numbers are not that bad. They're not great. We certainly could use improvement, but it's a little bit of positive news in a sense that the police, with the police we have, they seem to be doing a pretty effective job. Not to mention, I mean, there are a lot of other things. I think a lot of people have stepped up with neighborhood watch groups and so on. So it seems to be having somewhat of a positive impact. That said, when you talk about crime, do you think the solution to reducing crime is more police? Is that what you're going to work towards? What's your thought about that?
I personally, I don't believe in reducing the police. We know what is called neighborhood watch is very, very important. Those neighborhood watch, how do we organize them? It is those volunteer, who volunteer by themselves to be a member. But individual neighborhood watch is more important. If individuals set up their aims, their agenda and their focus that we need in our city crime need to stop, we should look beyond living in the crime society. And how do we do that? Let's set up within our street, know who and who is in the street. When we know who and who in the street, we can know who is a new person in the street.
So community involvement, know your neighbors, that kind of thing?
Community involvement is very, very important than setting up neighborhood. Neighborhood watch is good, but there's a limit they can do.
Of course.
Because if we say we are dedicated police to reduce police, let's say we have two police in Vallejo, those police going to die on time. Because we, do you want the two police to be working?
I got a question for you. A couple of things about issues with the police. In a City Council meeting in, I don't remember the date, but Chief Nicolini made the statement and it's actually, it's on the video, that he had spoken to the Police Officers Association, the union. And he stated that their position is, and I quote, "Cut the staff as much as you want. We want to be paid." So I wanted to get your thoughts on that statement by the police chief with regards to the police union and their, that position. What are your thoughts about that? And that fits into the context of the question about contracts coming in 2012, the fact that we have some of the highest paid police in the state and the question of how to afford police. And not just afford them because a lot of people are talking about measure B and saying more money, but it's a question of spending the money the right way.
Thank you.
So my question is, how do we keep our expenditures under control in a way that's sensible? Because the position that the police union has taken, cut the staff as much as you want, we want to be paid, obviously hasn't worked. And when the police contract was coming up for approval, many people got up and objected to it because the thing that people realized is that it's going to factor in raises. Did you know the police got a 6.29% raise last year? And they got another 2 point something or 3% this year. Still, I think they're still deciding on the exact number. So over 8% raise in two years in a recession to some of the highest paid police in the state. And of course, the result was that there's been a reduction in numbers over the period of time. So I wanted to get your thoughts on that and how you're going to approach, if you're elected, the contracts in 2012 and find the balance between paying these guys well, which we want to do, and having wages that are continuing to be class leaders in a city with Vallejo's challenges. So how do you find the balance?
With the economic right now and the budget constraint in our city of Vallejo. That statement or the police boss, I do not buy it. You know what? We can't pay...
You don't buy the statement?
I don't buy the idea. Call the police, we want to be paid.
I think most people don't.
Yeah, I don't buy that idea. I will tell you the truth.
So in other words, what I'm saying is, you know, there's, how would you approach cultural change and, you know, bring those expenses to a reasonable level so that we can have more police?
Okay. There's one thing I believe we can do. There should be a blueprint and a brainstorming. When we have blueprint, have a brainstorming. A brainstorming is that how much does it cost the city of Vallejo to pay this police as much? How much is the budget? Because we can't spend all our resources on one basket. When the, on one tree, when the branches is many, it's not possible. We have a lot to do with the city. If I'm elected, one thing I do is, there's a room to employ more police. I will stick on that. We might not be able to pay them as much, but we'll be able to employ as many. Let me tell you one thing. If we have bike, police riding bike in this city and you see a policeman every corner...
Bike police?
Yes.
We used to, it's a shame that got canceled.
Crime will be reduced. We have horse police. Crime will reduce. We have police driving car, driving taxi. Crime will reduce. Police driving other vehicle, not routine police, but with a different mark on it as police. Our police should be involved in the communities. And that is how you involve...
Well, it's tough because most of them don't live here.
Thank you. One thing is before we can stand as a policeman in the city, you must be our citizen of this city.
There's a legal problem with that. Can't require it.
We make sure we are, you know why? Because you run to somewhere else and stay somewhere else and you came here to intimidate our people because you're a policeman, that you need to stop. You have to be a member of the society to know what is going on in our society. Because you have to be used to them. Like now, you want me as elected, as a member, and want me to live in Vacaville because Vacaville is more safer?
Actually, most of our police live in Vacaville.
But that is wrong. And they have to live in our city to know what we are going through.
What about, what do you think about the idea? I mean legally, we can't, we can't require them to live in the city.
There's only, I agree, we cannot require them. But there's a way to make that to compare to live. There's, there's a system.
So what you're saying is kind of give them, try to give some incentives to stay here or something like that?
Yeah, we give them incentives. Take an example now. I will ask a policeman, "Is your wife working?" And he said, "No." "Let's get your job, your wife's job here. Stay with your wife here."
So use the wife for leverage if necessary?
Yeah. If, take an example, if our standard of education is improved, the policeman will live in Vallejo. They want, the policeman, they are living in Vacaville because their children are safer. If this city is safe, they will remain here. I'm telling you, nobody want to leave far from job. If you find out that who wants his child to go to school have been shot?
So I mean, obviously, education is a big thing. Tell me, going back to you just briefly, a little bit about your educational background aside from the military?
Okay. I'm in a European profession. When I came to this country, I started fresh. I have my A8 Computer Science.
Where did you go to school?
I was in Solano, I know, Alameda College, before I finished at E College. And I have my BS in Debrai University.
What university?
Debrai University.
Oh, Debrai. Right, it's a technical university.
Thank you.
Gotcha.
I finished my master, BS there as Technical Management. And I finished my master degree in Information System Security in Colorado Technical University in Colorado Springs.
Okay, so you're a computer security guy?
Oh, I'm a heavy one.
Okay.
Guru, when they say guru, I am. And I have a lot of license, project management accreditation for CCAPS. I have A+, I have a lot of accreditation. I'm a member of IBBA. I remember for a lot of organizations which helped me in a lot of different years, periods of project management and media analysis.
So you're a tech guy?
I'm a tech guy.
What about the idea of technical schools and things like that in Vallejo? Where do you stand on that?
Oh my God, that would be the best thing I have. If a technical school in Vallejo, not everybody loves high school. Not everybody love university. Technical school would be the best. Why is JAMA advancing technology than most country? Because of the technical school they have. That's why JAMA is more advanced in most technology than most country. If you see, they go to technical school. If we can have one or two technical school here, it will do us a lot of good. And when we have schools, when people are not idle, taking of how to do crime, how to do drug, keep them busy one way or the other.
So more opportunities, more educational opportunities?
More education, more, a lot of opening for job. People can create job. People will come from other city to do their authority here. When we have so many of them and with cheaper rate, it's going to help everybody.
Now, one question that I have for you. A lot of people that are running for the first time, they have a lot of positive ideas and I think you do, and a lot of enthusiasm. And oftentimes, people when they get in, they're very daunted by the mechanics of government, by the complexity, by the law, the procedural roadblocks and things like that. Do you have any experience that you think qualifies you for that? Any background committees or things that you've been on that give you some understanding or insight into the mechanics and the bureaucracy really?
Yeah, I have. Two to my research. You know what causes is when you are elected, you can't perform. You follow quote unquote, I said, the mafias. When I said the mafia, those who endorse you.
You're saying mafia?
When I say mafia, I did not mean those type of war mafia. Maybe I just say those people who endorse you, let's eliminate mafia. Those who endorse you.
So your constituency?
Yes, yeah. Who, if you endorse me...
And your supporters?
You might support us as a group of organization, companies. What do you expect from me? I have to dance to your tune. You like it or not. Because you support me financially, you supported me with people, but if I go one on one to individuals and I told them, "I'm going to work for you," I don't seek endorsement. Because if I'm endorsed, I'm bound by always to please them. That is why we have problem. Not that those people elected can't do anything, but they are being cycled by endorsement. That is where we have the problem.
So in other words, what you're saying is that you see special interest money and influence as a problem in Vallejo?
As a problem, not only Vallejo, in the whole world. And that is why the common people are still suffering. You see, because the money is, see company, they want the way they want, they want, they want it the way they want it, not the way to please the common people. They don't care about the common people, but they care about how much will I get to take my wife to London on vacation? How much will I get to take my girlfriend to somewhere else? But the people who are buying those things are the common people. You are using them and they are still suffering. The same problem still remain in Vallejo. We need a change of ideas. Our perspective should be different dimensions, not focusing, this is the way Vallejo is being run. We want it to be run the same way. We need a change, a change that emulate the common people. They are try the common people, "I belong to this city." Why people are leaving Vallejo? I met a woman said, "I will be living Vallejo to San Francisco." I said, "No." "Are you telling me, tell me a home when there's no problem?" I said, "Can you say any home there there's no..." She said, "Yes." "Go there, you see their problem, you will run back to Vallejo. Go to Oakland, oh, 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 you will run back. Go to Richmond, oh, 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 you will come back. Tell me who..."
Do you think some of the things in the media, the negative things in the media about Vallejo are overblown?
I think most of the media, some of them are reporting what they see. Some are reporting what they want to say. I don't, I can't say whether the media report negative, report positive. I personally, I deal on it and I don't read newspaper. If I want to read newspaper, I read on internet. I'm always...
I read it on the internet too.
Yes. I saw a lot of these, some story they gave about somebody. I know that was a lie. I know because I've heard this man spoke, I've heard him, the way he react, they gave negative. If our media can be positive thinking, the city can be positive thinking. If you say your child is bad and you tell the public your child is bad, your child is going to be bad. When you say my child, he is not there, he should be there with positive thinking. That is what is happening in our city.
So the power of positive thinking.
Yes.
Now, just going back a little bit, it leads me to another question. You talked about the problem with special interest groups and influence and things like that. And you look at Vallejo, it's a very diverse city. We've got all kinds of people, all colors, all different faiths, different groups and things like that. So what I wanted to bring up and ask you and just try to have an open discussion about, now you're part of the Vallejo Faith Organization.
I am.
And it's no secret that there's been, there's been tension between the gay community and the Vallejo Faith Organization and some of the different positions. So I wanted to see if we could talk about that a little bit, if that's okay with you? And maybe build some bridges and try to gather, gain some understanding. You know, there has also been some issues brought up about the ITN and Harvest Evangelism and Ed Silvoso and some of his activities in Uganda. So I wanted to get your thought because as a council member and a man of faith, obviously we have a gay community in Vallejo as well. And I wanted to see what your thoughts are and how you would represent the gay members of our community as well because they're, they're part of the constituency. So give me your, give me your thoughts about some of this.
Let me tell you one thing. Gay, straight, whatever, we are created by one God. They choose to live their lifestyle. I choose to live my lifestyle. It's left for them to take what they believe. I may not like what they are doing. I need to love them. What can't move is love, not likeness. I may not like him, but I need to love you for who you are and what you are and your belief. I try to understand me. I am married. I love to be married. They are gay, they like to be lesbian or gay. Whatever they choose is their own standard. But one thing we should look into gay, lesbian or straight. How do we live our life? One thing I believe is if everybody become gay, do you believe the population of America will be reduced?
Well, I mean, that's not going to happen.
No, no, it will, it will. Take an example, some country in Europe are looking for population because they refuse to have children. They are not gay or lesbian, but they refuse to have children. Some people, I even say, the more children you have, the more money they give.
Gay people have families too.
No, no, okay, I know gay people have family, but no producing, no man and woman produce their family. Somebody else produce those children. But can two women produce a child?
Well, I mean, in a sense, you know.
How, how? How does...
There's adoption, there's artificial...
I don't want to talk about what is supposed to be on TV, you know? I'm not, let's forget about adoptions. Can a man and a ma produce a child?
Not without intervention, obviously, no.
Thank you. Can a woman and a woman produce a child?
No, of course not.
Thank you. But if we all start becoming gay and lesbian, our population will increase, we will be overthrow.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any risk of population collapse.
There's a risk. No, it is a risk. You know why? I will tell you there's a risk. It might not be in our generations, the generation to come.
I mean, why would you think that, that everybody is going to become gay?
No, 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 I did not say everybody going to become gay. I say if everybody become gay and lesbian and we start stopping having children, where do we have children to adopt? There will be none.
But it's kind of a moot point because it's never going to happen. It's a hypothetical.
It's a good excuse, it will not happen, but it can happen. Let's say, I'm giving example...
But basically.
Okay, let me give you example now. In a family, a ma has five children. And the father, before he died, he say, I want my legacy to remain on earth. We have only one legacy, the name of the family. Not the home you build, not the car you have, the name of the family to remain. Say the whole, those family become gay and lesbian and all die, the family is eradicated. Yes or no?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of a moot point, really, I mean, to be honest.
Yeah, it's a good point.
No, no, it's a moot point.
I see, I see a moot point.
It's a point that has no, it has no basis, it has no relevance, really.
It will.
I mean, there have been, there have been for basically a long time, maybe like since forever, there have been gay people in the community.
Gay does not started right now. Do you know where gay started?
Where?
From the Bible. In the city of Sodom and Gomorrah. Gay has been there.
Yeah, I think gay people have been part of humanity forever.
They choose to be like that, but we have who call themselves gay and lesbian, still having children.
See, but I have a question for you. Have you had many gay friends?
A lot.
You have a lot.
Oh, yeah. I have lesbian girlfriend, lesbian friend, too.
And I do, too. And when you say they choose, you know, that's one of the areas where there's a divergence of opinion, because, you know, I have many gay friends and lesbian friends. And every one of them I've spoken to, you know, it's not a choice.
It's what?
To be who they are, it's not a choice, that's who they are. In other words, they don't, didn't wake up one day and said, I'm gonna be gay.
Yeah.
In other words, I know gay guys.
What they done to it?
I know gay guys who said, you know, I knew I was different when I was seven years old or six years old. And, you know, I have to take their word for it, their word for it. And I've never, I've never met, I've never met a gay person who said, I woke up one day and just decided I was gonna be gay. In other words, people come out and, you know, they say, okay, I'm gay, for example, right? But many people that I've talked to, they, there's a point when they come out, but that is who they are.
Okay. I met a gay lady, a lesbian lady. He has two children. He's a good friend of mine. I said, why do you choose that life? You know what he told me? Security. He said, I belong to a group of people who you cannot touch. I said, you, do you think so? I said, why? Why can you not be touched? I'm gonna say, oh, you do, I said, I don't think so. When you do something, they're gonna fire you where you are.
You're gonna what?
They're gonna fire her where she's working. He thought he belonged to a group, he said he belongs to a group of people where people cannot touch.
Oh, so.
He's taking an advantage.
To be a protected class.
Yeah, protected class. I said, that is wrong. You don't do wrong because you are a lesbian, you feel they can fire you. They will fire you.
Well, I mean, there are always gonna be people that take advantage of one position or another.
Thank you. And he already, he has two children. And I watched a TV program. A lady said, I hate guys, I hate guy. Why was he saying he hate guys? Why? The reason is, he has been cheated on. He said, I prefer to remain a lesbian. Even though you are lesbian, would the lesbian girlfriend will not cheat on you? They are cheating everywhere.
Well, sure. I mean, I don't think orientation has anything to do with it.
The mentality is so low that they don't raise.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I said, the mentality of the guy is so low, because a guy cheat on him, she want to become a lesbian? Would the lesbian not cheat on you?
Well, you know, I, I think you're talking about a specific case, and I don't know that person. But a lot of my gay friends who are in long-term committed relationships, quite honestly, and I say this with all sincerity, have been in committed, I mean, I know a number of gay couples who have been in many, many years-long committed monogamous relationships.
Good, good.
So, I mean, I don't really, I mean, more so than a lot of my heterosexual friends. I mean, a lot of my heterosexual friends have been divorced, people have been separated, things didn't work out, they go through relationships. And I honestly can count a bunch of gay couples that I know in Vallejo who have been together and committed long, long term. So I think everybody, when they're young, when they're young, everybody, I think, might have a time when they're experimenting or maybe a little more.
No, I don't believe it. I know why. I will explain to you. God who created man, created every individual in his own image. Be you a woman, that is the image of God you are. Be you a man, that is the image of God you are. God never make a mistake. He's a perfect God. When he creates a woman, he create her perfect to be a woman. When he create a man, he create the woman to be perfect, to be a man. He does not made a mistake, oh, I created you, oh, you supposed to be a woman. I have never read it in my Bible. God is a perfect and handsome God.
Right. Well, then, then gay people must be part of his design.
Yes. Gay is part of God's design, good. But I believe, I might believe, as gay and straight are quite different.
I agree. You're very different.
Let me tell you one thing, being a gay does not mean you are going to hell. I will tell you the truth. Being straight does not mean you are going to heaven. It's your relationship, sorry, your relationship with Christ, that's what matters. What are your relationship with God?
Well, I mean, part of the question that this leads into, Matthias, is, you know, when a person is religious, and there's religion, and there's politics, and there's separation of church and state.
Yeah.
Now, you're obviously a very religious man, and I have no problem with that. But what concerns me, and I think what concerns a lot of people, is the separation of church and state. In other words, you're gonna have people in Vallejo who are Christians, Jews, atheists, Muslims, all sorts. So how do you reconcile your very strong religious beliefs, your belief in Christ as a Christian, with duties as a council member and your need to act in a government that is designated to be secular?
Secular.
So, so talk to me about, I mean, obviously, and that's been one of the, obviously, one of the issues and one of the areas of friction between the faith organization and other parts of the community, where there are fears. People are afraid that things like dominionism, and I'm just being very open with you. And, you know, I just wanna have, just chat about it, because I think it's something that needs to be talked about. And I can tell you, a lot of other interviewers don't wanna touch it. Because, but it is something that people are talking about, it's something that people are concerned about. When they look at some of the things of Vallejo Faith Organization and some of the other organizations, like the Harvest Evangelism and some of the other groups that it is associated with, one of the things that is described is to bring a Christian ideas into different forms of government, right?
Okay.
Different government as well as different parts of society. The marketplace, they talk about marketplace ministers. They talk about bringing Christian moral ideas at any rate into the school. So I'm putting this out there, and I'm being very open.
It's a good idea. I'm gonna break it down for you.
And I'm hoping you can explain and clear up for me and either relieve or reinforce the fears of some people. But I will let you talk about that.
Um, people should not be afraid having a Christian as a board member.
I don't think they're afraid of that, but it's basically, it seems, it seems that the ideology is that, at least in some of the things that I've read, the ideology seems to be a goal of crossing the line between separation of church and state.
Okay.
And I wanna get your thoughts on that.
You see, in my church, in our church, when I'm preaching, you don't talk of politics. That is me.
Right.
There's difference between church and government and politics. I may not like what people want, I need to love them. Be afraid, our city is a secular city with different diversity. Elected a Christian should not bring his own fanatism to the communities. How do you see the people?
How do I see the people?
How do you see the people? How do you have the belief on them? We are not, anything Christianity should not come into government because you are serving Jews, Hindus, Muslim, uh, gay, straight, whatever tribe, you are not serving. When you said, well, we want to say, let me serve the Christian, you are discriminating. You don't need to be there. You are serving the community. Half, half of we are Muslim, Jews, Hindus, I have them. I have all tribe, Catholic, protestant, everybody. That's a people, oh, you are not like, I said, no. Are they, what I ask, are they created in what image? Image of Christian? Christian has no image. Image of Judaism? Judaism has no image. Image of Muslim? Muslim has no image. Image of other things, he has no image. But they are created in image of God, who is the father of all religion. We should not use religion as a yardstick. We know we are serving the people, we are serving the common people. Religious should not, 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 not be there at all, at all. Love the way I love my child, the way I love the other man's child. Care, religion should be backward, because you are not serving religion. My moral is quite different from your way of believe. And I've been telling everybody, I'm a born and dead child of God. We believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, and I stand by it. But I should not be that belief, impose it on people. You can't impose your belief on human being. I can persuade you to join my religion, but I can't force it on you. What did they say? How many American today becoming Muslim every year? Twenty thousand. What is the Muslim do? They are doing their homework. They are doing their homework. We need to do our homework. How many Christian become Muslim? Because they are doing their homework. While we are sleeping, fighting ourselves between religion, this, the, people are not fighting themselves, they are converting people. You see, that is the mistake a lot of Christians has made, a lot of other religions has made. We should talk to them in love. Let them know we love them. We don't tease them out, no.
Well, thank you, Matthias. I mean, I think it was important that, you know, to get your take on that. And it sounds to me like, you know, you seem to be pretty firmly saying that the separation of church and state is something you recognize.
Oh, yes. There should be separation. There should be separation. But we know our country, America, is built on what?
Built on what?
Yes. Our forefather in this country, what did they build America upon?
Religious freedom.
Thank you.
And as long as it goes to everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, Matthias, thank you for answering the hard questions. Is there anything else you can think of that we haven't covered that you wanna talk about?
Um, we wanna talk about our education in this city. Our, the school board are trying, but they are not doing the best. I will tell you the truth. There's a lot they can do that what they are doing right now. We need a change in our school system curriculum. We need.
How will you, I mean, as a council member, you don't really have purview over the schools. You have very limited, I mean, you can have some influence by talking to people and facilitating things maybe that the schools need. But how will you, as a council member, impact or affect those kind of changes?
Okay, there's a lot I can do.
Okay.
One, I will go to every school, where there are parent association in the school, I will be there.
Maybe, I mean, you think you'd be better off on a school board?
No.
No, okay.
I want parent association, I will be there. I will tell them, do you want your children to become this type, this, this type? What will benefit them? What will make them be more good? You need to speak out. They speak out to the school board members. I may not have influence. This is what we want. Do you want, if you do this, we don't want this. The school board are not dense, they are telestrous people, well learned. They will see it reason, because they will not be there if there's no children in the school.
Right. Well, yeah, and that's, I mean, with the Vallejo school, that is one of the problems, is the average daily attendance. Because when the schools have problems and then parents take the kids out, and they take the kids out, the schools get less money, and that compounds the problem. So it's kind of a vicious cycle.
Yeah, that is where they should learn to listen to those people who have their children in that school. When I talk about the school, parents should do more work than waiting for the school board or the teachers, everything. One, you don't give your children cell phone to school and be listening to music. I know phone is good to call, mommy, come and pick me up, it's good. But there is phone in the school, they are allowed to use it to call their mom. But taking phone, listen to music while the teaching is going on, I've seen it. And I stop the children, I've seen it, many of them. I see children holding iPod or BlackBerry, listen to music, shaking their head like this. I said, what are you doing? I want to be a rapper. Rapper? You are just seven years, you want to be a rapper? You're craving for the high school, you better finish high school or no, I want to be a rapper.
A rapper with a degree.
It's a big fight. We, we, how would they get a degree if they still go to school?
But, okay, so schools as part of the overall arc of things that need to be improved in Vallejo.
Needs to be improved.
And obviously, you can encourage that, you can encourage the parents, but you've got very limited influence. What about the other aspects?
The other.
Like, you know, what's your vision for Vallejo moving forward? Give me an idea about that. And I say this to all people that are running for the first time. Give me an idea, but give me one or two specific examples, specific examples of how it can be implemented within the framework of government. Because lots of people that run, when they run, they have, everyone has great ideas. But the question is, give me something that you can implement and how you will do it within the framework of government.
Moving everything forward in our city has a lot. Let's example job. This is Maryland, it's three mile around, you know that? Three miles.
Yeah. Mare Island is a good, you know.
Good place. If we install, I don't like casino. If we install casino here.
Oh, so you're not a fan of the casino?
I'm not afraid, but if we install casino here, you know, much just gonna bring over ten thousand. People will come, and we don't install casino, why here casino is better.
So do you favor a casino?
Oh, yes.
You do?
Oh, yes. I favor it.
So you don't think, you don't think that's a sin, though, gambling?
No, no, it's, I said, I don't like it.
Okay.
But it's gonna bring, you see, we say sin, we are not talking about that. We are talking to bring job to our city now.
Right.
I try to understand me.
I'm just trying to reconcile.
No, 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 you don't bring that, oh, we are talking of government. I try to understand me. If we establish casino here, why Vallejo is better than San Pablo? Cash click, you know why?
Why?
See, they can come through our boat. Most of those boat, we, most of those boat, we work twenty-four hours to draw people very close here, and they went to the casino to play. People will come from all other states, buy more money.
What about, what about access, though? I mean, you've got access by boat, but it seems to me like access by road is very limited. In other words, the Mare Island Causeway, I mean, I, that needs serious repair to handle bus traffic or replacement. And then on the other end, you've got Highway thirty-seven. And if you think about Infineon Raceway. And if you think about Infineon Raceway, um, say a bus breaks down on thirty-seven, that's coming to the casino, bus coming, breaks down on race weekend. Can you imagine the traffic jam? So how, i- i- if, if we did put a casino on Mare Island, uh, how do you deal with those, uh, traffic and infrastructure problems?
Okay, let, first of all, that's San Rafael Road, I disagree with. That, that road is not a road.
Thirty, well, it's one of the access points, thirty-seven.
I call it a farm road. You know why? Too tiny. It's supposed to be four lane. Four lane here, four lane, I disagree. When I'm going to that place, what I say every day, if a big vehicle break down, we all stock.
Right, and, and I'm just saying.
We'll be hungry for the, let's say the vehicle breakdown, how did you remove the vehicle? You cannot remove it. Everybody will stop for three days.
Yeah.
They need to, to expand.
Right.
The road, I think four lane here, four lane here, that is what we will fight for. Not only that, even the road coming to Maryland, that need to be modernized.
Okay.
That is very, when we modernize that road, taxi cab, driving cab today, people driving cab can make money. Those buses will make money. Nobody will go to Cash Creek. I need Vallejo to be better than Cash Creek to play gamble.
You don't, you don't think we're sort of, we would be, I mean, I think like a casino would probably take, when you think about the, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, no pun intended. When you look at something like a casino, it has to be Indian land, uh, which, you know, is neither here nor there in a lot of ways. I mean, there's pros and cons to that. But you, when you look at going through, uh, from everything I've researched, going through Bureau Indian Affairs and the government and all the bureaucracy, you're, you're looking at a good solid ten years, uh, easy before something like that can happen.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
And, and you're going to have other casinos, other casinos are probably going to object, uh, or try to slow it down because there are other areas where they're looking at building casinos. So, you know, you, you're up against that kind of a situation and, and probably a considerable, uh, length of time before that kind of thing gets transferred through Bureau Indian Affairs, gets moved on down the line. So, so, I mean, to me, that's, that's kind of an obstacle, you know?
No, I don't, you know why?
Why?
There should be not be monopoly.
Well, there's, there's should and then there's.
There should not be monopoly. A monopoly style of entrepreneur destroy societies.
But I, I don't think it's a monopoly.
It's monopoly because we should not look at it that casino should mainly for the Indians. No, if I'm elected.
Well, but it's, I'm not saying they're mainly for the Indians, but it has to become a sovereign nation. In other words, to have a casino, it has to be a sovereign, the land has to be transferred to be sovereign Indian nation.
No, I don't think so.
It does, it does.
Okay.
Yeah, trust me on that. And, and it just, that process takes a very long time, you know?
Take an example, I'm elected today.
Yeah.
And I see somebody from China or from Nigeria or from India who has ten billion to establish casino in Maryland. Are you telling me I have to see permission from the Indians? Why?
Because gambling isn't, isn't, uh, legal under most circumstances in California. I mean, the Indian casino is one of the exceptions where you can do it. It's not like Nevada.
That is where we go for court for it. If you can give what is good for the good, is good for the gandhas.
But that'd be, I mean, if you were going to change that, it would be on the state level.
You know, that's the way we go court, go to court for it. So that it should not be monopoly, monopoly destroy.
But I don't think the Indian tribes would like that very much because they have all the competition.
No, they, they need to have competition. That is what we are talking about, monopoly destroy.
But as a council member.
Yes.
That's, that's something that's, that's, you know, out, way outside, I mean, it's much bigger than the city.
Agreed, we need to call them and let them know. We know Indian overlay, we know. We need to call them, tell them, look, we know this is your territory. But can I drink water in your territory? If they say, oh, yes, okay. You want me to drink water in your territory? Good, do you want to be my friend because I'm black? Or, or do you want to be my friend because you are an Indian? Do you want to be my friend, say yes. The way we can work together.
We all want to be friends, but the, the state laws, we have to navigate.
There we are, that is where, who wrote the laws? Human.
Well, yes, of course.
And human can change the law to benefit every, look, that, we should not be.
But, but a state.
Dogmatic in doing things that this is.
Okay, see, I just, I just want to interject, this is, this is kind of where, this is where I'm, 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 I'm hanging on to you a little bit, Matthias. Because like I say, a lot of people that run for council and, and they've got a, a lot of positive ideas. And, you know, there's, there's hurdles, you know what I mean? So you can run on the idea of a casino and, you know, we can look at pros and cons of it. And there are advantages and disadvantages to putting casino on Mare Island. But the question of how to deal with, you know, navigating the law, dealing with the bureaucracy and, and making it happen. Because I see, and, and the reason I'm hard on people in the interview with this is because I see lots of people coming with, they've got big ideas. And then when they, they get into the mechanics of it, that's it.
Let me tell you.
So.
You know why they were not able to talk when they get in?
When what?
When they get in as his council member, they were not able to move forward their ideas. They don't go to the voters. There's always a way to let people know, that is why America is better than many countries. You can speak out through the voters. Obama said, if you don't do what I've sent to you, I'm going to tell the voters. If I tell them and I'm elected, you don't do, I'm going, I'm going to go to the people. I will work with them to the city council member, I will not sit down there, this is what we want, this is our city.
I, I, I think what you're saying is, is that part of the problem is, is apathy and I agree with you. And it is, it is a challenge to get people to come out and vote for Vallejo and, and I agree that's one of our problems.
You have to say yourself, like now, I'm going now telling myself to people to what I believe we.
Right.
I'm not fighting to that. If I'm elected, let this BB company come endorse me. Oh, you have to do this, you have to do that, no, but I will do it. But does it benefit the common man? That is what we, because the common man are the bedrock of voters. Big men don't vote. Some of them, it's how they'll be voting, they'll be in Japan or Honolulu. Or they'll be in Dubai, enjoying themselves. The common people, they have nowhere to go, they are the one voting. We have to make sure we please the common people.
Sure, sure. Well, and, and so, so let's move on from casino. I mean, obviously the, to do it, there are going to be hurdles, they're not insurmountable, but they're there. And, and you favor it. What about, what about marijuana collectives?
Oh, yes, you know marijuana?
Where do, where do you stand on that?
When I look at the statistics, I look the research, marijuana will bring money. What are the effect to the common people? The way I looked the pro and con in casino, I look the pro and con in marijuana. Do you believe people that take marijuana say because of medical something, ninety-eight percent of them are lying?
Well, I, I think there's a certain, certainly there are people that are helped by it and I've known people who are.
They will not tell you the truth, I will tell you, wait, wait, wait.
I mean, I have known people with cancer who were helped by it, but, but I agree with you. And even in an interview I did with one of the marijuana collective owners, um, you know, he, he's admitted, I mean, not every single person that comes in here needs it as a matter of, of life and death. But be that as it may.
Let me.
We, we have over twenty of them. And, and whether everyone goes in there absolutely has got to have it as a matter of life and death, probably not. Okay? But we're in the, the situation now where we're looking at an ordinance, we're looking at, um, writing an ordinance to, uh, to tax these things. We're looking at moratorium, um, we're looking at a number of different ideas. So, so give me your, your take, go ahead.
Hundred percent, I disagree with marijuana in our city.
Okay.
One, lot of homes marijuana have destroyed. Many, many of the young ladies, young men taking marijuana, who, who drop out of high school, are so many. I met a boy of fifteen years in the night. I asked him, where are you coming, how old are you, first of all? He said fifteen, where are you coming from? He don't want to talk. I said, don't be afraid, I'm not the policeman. Have confidence, I'm like a father to you. I went to visit my friend, I moved close to him, his mouth was smelling marijuana. I say, you taking marijuana, I say, yes. Of what benefit to you? You know what he said? I just want to be high.
Well, I mean.
My friend gave it to me, I want to be high. I said, what benefit? He said, you know what, he just said, nothing. He said, what of your grade in this school? I stopped school, I stopped school, my bad. I said, I said, what is my, my bad is not an English.
But, I mean, you, much the same thing could be said about alcohol and that's legal.
Okay, yes.
So in other words.
Alcohol is legal.
Right.
Marijuana is legal drug.
Right.
Is a, because, you know why they legalize, uh, alcohol? How many big men, they take it? If though it's, is a legal license drug, it does not hurt. But if you take.
In other words, what I'm saying is, when you, when you look at, there's, there's different ways of looking at, at an issue like this in a sense that you can say, this is legal and this isn't. So if you're doing this, if you're getting, if you're getting drunk till you fall down every weekend, it's legal. If you're smoking marijuana until you, you're incapacitated every weekend, it's not legal. Okay, you could make that argument if you're not on, you know, medical marijuana. So, you know, or have a card or what have you, the exception, so to speak, for someone with a quote unquote condition. Be that as it may, when, when we look at these things, we look at, I mean, to me, I look at prohibition.
Okay.
Right? A prohibition of alcohol. Now, I, I don't think anybody's going to make the argument that that was a success. And in terms of social destructiveness, alcohol beats marijuana statistically, there's no question about that.
You are hundred percent right.
More socially destructive. So when we get into a situation where you've got alcohol and people can go to bars and they can drink and it's legal. And you've got marijuana and there are these collectives and et cetera and so on and so forth, people can get the stuff. And you, you look at it in terms of which is more socially destructive, which does more harm to society. I, I think there's very little question that, that it's alcohol. So basically, my question to you is this. If, if you are a prohibitionist in the sense of you, you don't want to see marijuana, why not applying the same standard to alcohol?
Okay, let me tell you one thing, I will tell you the two differences. I cannot apply those two differences, banning marijuana, banning alcohol. One, you see, alcohol, if anybody took an alcohol or is taking an alcohol regularly, gradual death is going.
Right, you're going to damage yourself eventually.
But marijuana, instant death.
Instant death?
Instant, one.
Why, why do you say that?
Uh, that's, I want to explain to you.
All right.
When you are so high, even though you take knife to chew a man with marijuana, some of them don't feel it. But pinch a man with alcohol, he gonna bull on you.
I, you know, I, I don't know.
He just like.
I'm going to disagree with you, Matthias.
Okay, I.
If you go, if you go to a, a, a big, a big festival where there's a lot of alcohol versus you go to a reggae concert, okay? The heavy metal concert with people drinking alcohol, there's going to be more fights versus, you can ask the cops this one.
No, no, I agree, I agree, alcohol, there will be more fight.
Yeah.
You know why? Their metabolism is totally zero or dead. Why that of the, uh, marijuana is still correct? There's something I believe, I was, when I was in London, I went to Rego Music, uh, Disco something. I, immediately I entered the hall, oh my God, smoke on marijuana, it just turn my eye. I just struggle to go, I don't smoke, I just struggle to go out. I felt, I stay one corner.
You're walking three feet above the ground, huh?
I just enter not to, 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 I just struggle to go out, my eye just turn, I just struggle.
Matthias, don't feel bad, I don't hold my pot well either.
Oh, no, please, I know you don't smoke.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't.
You know, I just managed to go out. My eye told me, the, my niece who took me there. To the place, I said, let us go and so she like, took me there. He just came and said, uncle, uncle, what is going on? I said, I can't stand that place. I know you don't smoke, you don't drink, you don't do anything. I said, do you? He said, no, I'm used to here, get out, let's go home. I took him, we start going home. I said, you want to kill me in this place?
Yeah, well, it's not your thing and that's fine.
I cannot withstand it.
Yeah.
Even when I see people smoking it, I cannot, but I can start.
I don't like putting anything in my lungs either.
I, but if I, people take alcohol.
Yeah.
I may hear, it does not affect me much, but marijuana, when you are there, oh God.
Well, different, different strokes for different folks.
The problem is, if you put a marijuana man and a madman who take alcohol, alcohol is so destructive that.
Right.
It killed gradually. Even when do operations, a man take an alcohol too much, will wake up immediately. It will wake up when do operation because too much alcohol on the system. But a man who took marijuana know what is going on. We know there's a pro and con on both side, but the fact of marijuana is more destructive.
You think it's more destructive?
Oh, Lord. And alcohol is a long term destruction.
I've seen people do themselves in pretty quick with alcohol.
Doing good.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you're pounding down a whiskey every week.
An alcoholic doing good?
No, no, I'm saying I've seen him do themselves in with alcohol pretty, pretty quickly.
Yes, uh, but that means.
I mean, it, oh, you know, it takes several years, but I.
Or they put a very type of alcohol.
Yeah, well.
Because when you take too much hot wine, I don't say social wine, we have what you call social wine.
What is that?
Take little sip.
Right.
Oh, everybody is taking social wine.
That's me, I'm a lightweight.
You don't take much, you just take little sip, that is okay.
Right.
But when you take a whole bottle of hot drink.
Right.
Another bottle of fun drink, it's worse than even beer.
Sure.
I try to understand me.
It's like a lot of things, you can overdo it, you can overdo it.
All those things destroy lives.
You know, I've just, I, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to look at both sides of it. I mean, on, on the one hand, you, you talk about the casino and that can bring revenue, there's up and downside to that. Uh, you know, the medical marijuana thing, that may be facing some, some legal challenges. And that's still unfolding, so, so there are potentially issues there, obviously. But from the, the social aspects, you know? I mean, I guess you've got your, that's, you've got your position on that, that it's, feel that it's more, more socially destructive. I mean, a lot of people will disagree with you.
I've seen, I've seen a lot of my friends being destroyed by marijuana.
Really?
But this guy was so good in school. But when in long run, he become a madman, go naked in the street. But hardly for, alcohol may get naked, when it cool down, they come to their senses. But marijuana enter the bloodstream to the extent that before they become normal is very difficult. While alcohol will get normal immediately, after the whole eye is clear, maybe twelve hours. Marijuana will last years, that's why we destroy marijuana.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think there are a lot of people that, that, you know, just in closing on that, I think there are a lot of people that will disagree with you and I.
I know, I know, people are, is that, is that, it's what they choose to do.
Yeah. And, uh, you know, I mean, I, I, I would, I, I think the, some of the science would disagree with you as well. But that's something we can agree to disagree on.
Let me tell you one thing, a lot of science research on marijuana.
Yeah.
Ninety-five percent of those doctors are lying.
Okay.
They know very well, I can buy a doctor, tell him cigarette is good.
Right.
Whereas how many people would the cigarette destroy?
Right.
But because of money, we should look beyond money.
Right.
When we look beyond money, we can do better for our citizen. But when we say quote unquote, what I get, what I get can destroy you. You can be a victim because if I should pay you back because I need money, one day, most of those people, their children will be affected by those things.
Okay. Well, so bottom line, pro casino, anti marijuana.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think we've, we've covered a lot, is there, you know, we're coming back.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and, um, is there anything you want to add or, or, or say to? Yeah, and, and is there anything you want to add or, or, or say to, say to the audience?
What I want to tell the audience is, I want you guys to vote me on November eighth because I will fight like a lion for you. To make sure you get what you want. Not pleasing the wealthy, to please those who are suffering like me. I need your votes. Vote for Matthias Iswimeme. The man who's here to make sure our city is turned around. They are doing good job in our city, I know, but we need to do better. We need to be excellent in everything we, we need to have vision, a brainstorming, integrity, humility, humbleness. With that, we can move forward, thank you.
Matthias, thank you so much for sitting with me.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for answering the hard questions and, and, you know, knocking around some different ideas.
Yeah. With different ideas, we can go a long way, because I know we cannot finish building a bridge overnight. It take time. What with zeal and seriousness, we can cut it short.
Yeah, I, I hope we'll keep talking and I, and I, I hope you and I can continue to talk and maybe build some bridges.